Uh, next behind that will be Elizabeth Michaels. Hi Jennifer, welcome.
Good afternoon. Okay, um, so I'm here to address what I think a lot of us are here to address, which is the bathroom, uh, policy. So, um, once again, my name is Jennifer Soriano and I am a proud transgender Latina here in, at Chamberlain Park High School. Um, and so I really just want to say, um, I know a lot of people like using the bathroom night not past your mind, you know, like you might not think, "What bathroom am I going to use?" But for me, that's an everyday thing. Every day I'm thinking, "Am I going to use this bathroom? Am I even going to use the bathroom?" Because it's become a fear. And so now that this has been brought up, it's, "Well, I'm not going to even because it's a fear." Um, and I think it's just like, now it feels like school's almost unsafe. And I have a few numbers here and it's like eighty-two percent of transgender youth report feeling unsafe in schools. And I have become part of that percentage just because it, I feel like the outnumber, like the out one. Um, and I think it's just, it, it's, the way that things have become, it feels like we're just showing kids and, and people and our migraine and stuff, that it's okay to treat people who are different wrong, in a wrong manner. And that's not okay. And I think we can all agree on that, honestly. Um, and I am no different than other student, and so, and, and other students. And so I just want to say that we take time to think about people, uh, other trans people like Leela Alcorn or Blake Brocking who passed away, um, and committed suicide because of what they said in their suicide notes were, "A world that treated them differently than everybody else." And I think a lot of trans people can agree that this world has become not safe and just not accepting for them. Um, so I just ask that everybody thinks and asks them these questions. How many more transgender youth is going to have to commit suicide before we think, "You know what? They're people too, and they deserve the same equal rights as anybody else." Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Please hold back on your applause. We want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to come forward. We don't have to continue this evening. If we want to stop, we can. So I please ask you to please respect the rules for our community portion of this meeting. Next card I have is Elizabeth Michaels. Welcome.
Hello.
Yeah, that's the best one.
Um, hi, I'm Elizabeth Michaels. I have two kids in the district. We moved to Anoka in, um, 2013. Uh, my kids love art-type stuff, so we went to AMSA where, uh, they found lots of people who, like them, enjoyed the arts. And, uh, we came from a small town. Uh, I've lived lots of places, but my kids had only lived in that small town before this. And it was a small conservative town, and unless you fit in this little bitty box, you didn't belong in that town, even if you'd lived there and your ancestor lived there forever. That's just the way it was. My son loved theater and because of that, you know, people looked at him strangely. So I specifically moved my children to Anoka to have them go to Anoka Middle School for the Arts, because I had done my research and made sure that it was not just a slogan. It really is for the Arts, and they loved it. And they had great support there in teachers and friends. And, um, I just think that, once it gets past the middle school part, um, personally, my son went, uh, to Anoka for a while, and while he, you know, loved hanging out with his friends that he still had there and stuff, it was not the same. It was not as accepting as the middle school was. That's just the way it was. And, um, they're now at Blaine, and they've found another group of friends that is, you know, a good fit for them. But, uh, my, uh, daughter just came out to me as she had an interest in another girl. And she didn't say, "I'm gay, I'm lesbian, I'm a whatever." And at first I was like, "Well, that's strange." But then I'm like, "Well, I don't say I'm heterosexual, so why should they have to say anything?" They just said, you know, "I like this person. I love you, you're my kid." That's all it is. And I think that all of our children, regardless of gay, straight, trans, lesbian, um, anything, biracial, you know, all my children told me after, uh, the election is they had so many friends, whether they were scared because of their color of their skin, or where they came from, or their family might be deported, or they were in the LGBTQAI community, or they just, you know, looked like somebody that someone might want to pick on. And before that, when we had, um, our previous president Barack Obama, uh, tell people that, you know, "We need to accept kids and we need to have them be able to go where they feel most comfortable."
Elizabeth, you're running up on your time.
Okay, I'm sorry. If you said, "Can this boy come into the girls' room?", of course that would be ridiculous. But if this boy identifies as feminine, you are taking away their right to feel safe by saying they cannot go where they feel most comfortable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next card that I have is Alexandra Rozinska. Alexandra? And then the next one I'll have is Gabriel Nicholas. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Alexandra Rozinska, and I've been living in the school district for probably over twenty years. I'm a trans feminine woman, um, work at Wells Fargo Bank. I personally know the, uh, pain and suffering that kids go through when they can't be accepted for who they are. And the bathroom issue is a very personal place of safety. And I know you all love our kids and you want the best for them. So let's embrace their diversity, let's support them and nurture them and give them what they need. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next card I have is Gabriel Nicholas, and then Ranny Nicholas afterwards. Okay, uh, Ranny? Welcome. Go ahead, you can have a seat right there. That mic works best if you just talk right into that.
Hi, my name is Ranny Nicholas. Um, I've lived in this area for about fifteen years. I worked for Anoka Henepin, I'm now in Spring Lake Park. But I have, um, a child who, um, has experienced some discomfort because, um, there weren't opportunities to choose the safest place for him without asking for an exception for what room, or what facility, or what locker room. So I, um, have had to advocate and say, "Please can you allow my child to use the family restroom to change? Please don't put him in the position where he has to be in a room with all those children changing." And, um, the information wasn't communicated, and he was forced to change in that situation. And I had a very tearful, anxious, upset child. And, um, I just don't believe that children should be forced to be put in that situation, or have to be singled out, or we should have to advocate individually for each child because, God forbid, the information shouldn't be passed around one child at a time. All children should feel safe. My child, your child. And, and not because my child identifies as anything, just because it created, um, a forced situation, an anxious situation. So our children should feel safe and have options that are extended to all of them equally. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Next card I have this evening is Peter Thompson. And then Katie Johnson next. Welcome, yeah, that works the best.
All right. I come from a house where anybody that uses six words when they could use twelve just isn't trying hard enough, so I'll try to keep this brief. Um, I'm a father of three kids in this school district, and as I look forward to the next few years of their life, I have to wonder if they're actually being educated in an environment that mirrors the same values that we're trying to teach at home. And I won't comment on their journeys or their genders, that's theirs to disclose if they wish to. But as we heard, over eighty percent of trans and gender nonconforming youth feel unsafe at school. As recently as August thirty-first, Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center has published a study that shows that over, or approximately forty-two percent of trans and gender nonconforming youth report engaging in some form of self-injurious behavior, and at least thirty percent have had at least one suicide attempt in their past. When we're facing a decision of whether or not to put money where our mouth is, whether or not to pass an inclusive policy that provides for the safety and well-being of all of our students, it makes zero sense to me, as a person and as a father, to even consider that there's a, that there are two sides to this story. On one, we have no articulable harm. We have some people that might be uncomfortable, probably because of their religious beliefs, and I'm not insensitive to that. But on the other side, we have a vulnerable population of students incredibly likely to commit suicide that deserve as equal a chance at a healthy, safe, and productive education as anybody else. I think it's due time that we, as a district, members of the board, teachers, administrators, staff at all the schools, and all the parents and families of all the children involved here, do what we need to do and start passing more inclusive policies for our kids.
Okay, thank you, Peter. The next card I have is Katie Johnson, and then Kaylee Bachan will be next. Katie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for opening the meeting to comments. I'm an Anoka Henepin School District, District resident, and I currently have one student in the district, in a district high school. I'm an ally to the transgender community. I know you want us to be brief, so I'm going to bring up only one point, even though there are many others. In the testimony that I heard here last month, and in an email campaign orchestrated by the Minnesota Family Council, it is suggested that providing single-stall bathrooms is the compassionate way to allow transgender students to access the bathroom during school day while maintaining dignity and safety. This is not sufficient. Demanding that all transgender students use segregated facilities does the following: To suspect every transgender student of being a threat strips every single one of them of their dignity. To demand that transgender students use a specially designated bathroom when they would prefer to use the common bathroom that matches their gender creates and maintains a stigma that they are so different that they can't be allowed in the regular bathrooms. This is in no way compassionate, and it fosters a completely unnecessary division among students. Separate single-stall facilities are not usually even a practical solution for students, since it is likely that the only bathrooms they are allowed to use are not conveniently accessible during the passing time between classes. And it only takes two people needing to use the same bathroom at the same time to make one of them out of luck. This is not equal access. We have raised our children to be kind, compassionate, and welcoming, and they do not feel threatened by transgender people using the same common bathroom. It sends me that people in this school district are promoting a policy that is not kind, compassionate, or welcoming. I urge you to fully support transgender students with the possibility of full bathroom access. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have also, uh, said that if you did bring written comments, if you'd like to leave them with Debbie Kosky, we'll make sure that board members get those too. So, uh, as you leave, you can give them to Debbie, and she'll make sure board members have those, uh, written comments. Uh, the next card I have is Kaylee Bachan, and then after that, Dot Betzler. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Heidemann, Superintendent Law, and School Board members. I'm Emma, and I'm here with Brianna, Kayle, and Hoyam. We are eighth and seventh graders at Coonawitz Middle School, and we are here to talk to you about transgender bathroom rights. There is no official policy on whether or not transgender students can use the bathroom that they identify with, but I would like to change that.
Me and other GSA members sat at all the lunches for a day and got all these signatures, most of which came from allies. Um, we got five hundred twenty-nine signatures. From, we got signatures from allies of the LGBT community. They all signed as a way of saying that they would not mind sharing a bathroom with a transgender student.
They should be able to use the bathroom without being stared at or ridiculed. They are humans and they have feelings that are valid. They are an important part of our community. It's a fact that thirty percent of transgender people commit or attempt suicide because they feel unwanted and very unwelcome. Students who come out as transgender and get negative reactions such as being bullied are thirteen times more likely to kill themselves. If we provide a safer, more supportive school community, we will be able to cut down on this risk severely.
It's not going to be easy to change, and it's not going to happen right away, but I know we can do it if we all come together as a community. We can make a very positive impact by starting off with making a policy that states that transgender students can use the bathroom that they identify with. We could make a big change.
Even though the school has made steps by putting in all gender bathrooms in our school, this is not enough. Transgender students, uh, would have to take valuable time out of class, and that would be causing more, uh, drawing more attention to that person. Things such as bullying can get worse because of this. Bathrooms are used only to use the bathroom. Only one person is in the stall at a time, so why is it such a problem? Transitioning is a very confusing time for that person, and when they don't have access to materials that could help them with these, these bathroom policies can make it harder. Thank you, um, thank you, members of the school board, for letting us force our opinions.
Yeah, thank you very much, students. Nice testimony. Next card I have is Dot Betzler, and then Jen Secor Nelson will be next. Welcome, yeah, that one works best.
Chair Heidemann, members of the school board, Superintendent Law. My name is Dot Betzler. I live in Andover, been here for twenty-some years. I'm, my three kids graduated from Anoka High School, and I'm the Executive Director of Twin Cities LGBT Pride. I believe probably that one of the last times I spoke at a school board meeting was during the suicide contagion crisis of a few years ago. I feel that in the current political climate, those wishing to harm the LGBT community feel more empowered to do so. It's our job to keep all of our children safe. As we've heard, it's well-known that transgender and gender nonconforming people have a higher rate of suicide than the general pop, population. Ostracizing transgender students by forcing them to use separate facilities can lead to higher rates of stress and contribute to an unhealthy environment. Minneapolis and St. Paul both have adopted gender-inclusive policies, and the St. Louis Park School Board is voting on that policy tonight. Now is the time for Anoka Henepin to adopt their own gender inclusion policy. Um, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Dot, thank you very much. Next item I have is Jen Secor Nelson, and then the Reverend Chris McCardle will be after that. Jen, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Law, Chair Heidemann, and members of the board. My name is Jen Secor Nelson. I'm a resident of Blaine, and my two children go to an elementary school there. In addition, I have been a middle school English teacher in the district for fifteen years. I am speaking you tonight, both as a parent who loves her children, and as a teacher who loves her students. It is this love and compassion that compels me to advocate for the transgender youth in our schools and ask that you, as a board, adopt a gender-inclusive policy for all Anoka Henepin's district schools without delay. Currently, the district's approach of evaluating the needs of transgender students changing in restroom facilities is determined upon by a case-by-case basis. In these cases, schools provide students with separate but equal facilities and rooms. On the surface, this policy seems logical, a compromise perhaps. However, in practice, this policy is dangerous, exclusionary, and inequitable. First of all, when transgender students must use a separate changing room, they are automatically outed as being transgender. The board has adopted a policy that singles out transgender students by forcing them to use separate restrooms and changing rooms. This further stigmatizes trans kids as the other and singles them out for verbal and physical assaults. The impact on these students can be devastating. A UCLA study found that seventy-eight percent of transgender students who experienced verbal and physical assaults have attempted suicide. That was as recently as 2013. Seventy-eight percent of those students. I'm wondering if this is a number that the board would be okay with. Now, I know you have heard the facts, figures, and statistics about the perilous lives both closeted, in, closeted and out transgender students face. I know you know that transgender students, and adults for that matter, are by a staggering amount more often victims of assaults than the assailants. So I will not enumerate those facts any further. Instead, I want to talk about equality under the law. The nineteen fifty-four Supreme Court ruled, of course unanimously in Brown v. Board of Education that separate but equal was unconstitutional under the Fourteenth Amendment by the Equal Protection Clause. The court cited a series of tests performed by two psychologists, and that brings me to my point. They demonstrated that segregation had a negative effect on the psyche of black children, instilling in them a sense of inferiority, and I quote from the study, "To separate children from others of similar age and qualifications solely because of their race," and I would add, "their gender identity, generates a feeling of inferiority as to their status in the community that may affect their hearts and minds in a way that will likely never be undone."
You're running up on your time.
Thank you. These arguments should apply to our transgender students as well. I'm a proud teacher of Anoka Henepin, and I appreciate the training that we as staff members have received about transgender students. I implore you to follow the courageous examples of the Minneapolis-St. Paul and St. Louis Park school boards and adopt a pro-student gender inclusion policy without delay. Our students, all of them, are counting on you to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Jen, you can leave that testimony too if you'd like. The next card I have is Reverend Chris McCardle, and then, then Jacy Jablonski will be next.
Thank you for recognizing me this evening, Chairman Heidemann, Superintendent Law, members of the school board. I'm the Reverend Chris McCardle. I am an Anoka resident, the parent of a preschooler in the Anoka Henepin school system, and the pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ, the church that is just on the corner that shares the block with this building. Since our church's founding in eighteen fifty-five, we have followed the teachings of Jesus Christ, who embraced those whom society deems unworthy of full inclusion. As such, we are an open and affirming congregation, meaning that we affirm that all persons of any sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or gender expression are fully made in the image of God. We who hold to the teachings of Christ affirm that it is Genesis one twenty-seven that tells us, "So God created humankind in God's image, male and female God created them, not male or female." God is beyond gender, and we believe our transgender friends have much to teach us about the image and character of God. I'm here today on behalf of my congregation to support those testifying on behalf of the trans students in the district, students who are beloved by God and deserving of our full support and care according to the best practices established by the trans community and experts. As such, we ask you to adopt a policy that allows all students to use the bathroom and locker facilities that match their gender identity. No student deserves the social shame and ostracism that can come from being singled out by their peers. I know you have heard much testimony already about the harmful ramifications of that kind of attention, so I won't reiterate it. Rather, just to add this: In addition to adopting a just policy, I urge you to equip, train, and make available support staff who will love our LGBTQ students for who they are, not for who fear and misunderstanding make them out to be. It is through actions like these that we live in to Christ's call to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. For the sake of those who stand in the path of harm if we do nothing, please act, do justice, love kindness, and most of all, walk humbly with the families who very much need your support today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next card I have is Stacy Jablonski, and then Pam Riddle will be next. Stacy, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Board Chair Heidemann and Superintendent Law and Board members. I used to videotape school board meetings for St. Louis Park, and I know how long these meetings can last. It can last a pretty long time, so I sympathize with you and, and thank you for, uh, your commitment to the students of this district. I have, uh, children in elementary school, middle school, and high school, and I have been an Anoka County resident since nineteen seventy-two. I verified that with my dad this, uh, past weekend. And, uh, my wife and I bought a house in Anoka County eighteen years ago because of its affordability and decided to, uh, stay in the area to raise our three children. Anoka Henepin Schools has excellent teachers, as we've seen a lot of them come up and speak with us. I love the teachers here. I'm a very pro-public school person. And these teachers have gone out of their way to give our kids memorable experiences to carry into adulthood, and I thank these teachers for that. Teachers are great. It's unfortunate is, one of the, uh, top three size-wise, actually it's the top school district size-wise, that Anoka Henepin Schools is not leading the way when it comes to trans students. It'd be awesome if we could take it and, and beat out these other, uh, these other districts. Trans, I have friends from Minneapolis here. Okay, so trans students should not be forced to be outed by being required to use, uh, private areas for restroom slash locker room use. I would encourage the school board to take a serious look at the, oh, this is the St. Paul's district. It's, it's like two pages. Minneapolis is a, it's a, what do they call it? Policy five hundred. It's called, uh, gender inclusion. It's pretty, pretty quick. I think maybe someone has, uh, presented that to you before, so I won't do that again. Um, let's see, then we go into Minneapolis, they have a little more extend, extended version, which is also decent. And as a public school district, we must not fail our students. I am in support of adopting a policy for transgender students that affirms the person that they are. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next card I have is Pam Riddle, and then next will be Veronica Carey. Pam, welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Yeah.
And, you know, I hope you're not getting sick of me.
Nope, not at all.
But all you gotta do is, you know, adapt a gender inclusion policy, if you want to get rid of me. And a couple other people back there. So, anyway, just a reminder, this, the district motto is "A Future Without Limits," which I said last time, which you see all over. But, again, limit is that key word for me. I, I'm just heartbroken that a friend of mine, uh, has been limited. And, um, I don't need to go into details, but he's been limited because he is transgender and had to use an alternate space. Anyway, I got an email today from the district thanking me for my volunteer hours. I volunteered so much this past year that I put all my volunteer miles on my tax returns. So, I feel that I'm okay to say that I see how kids need to feel included in schools, including my daughter, who has to use a separate, she doesn't have to. She chooses to use a separate bathroom at this point, so there's no controversy there. Um, but I see how she works pretty hard not to have her peers see her, even though I, she knows, they know she goes in there. So, we need a gender-inclusive policy in the state's biggest school district. We're behind already, as you can, as you heard earlier. And, um, I would like to say that I don't want you to limit students by using alternate locker rooms, 'cause in faci, in high schools and middle schools which have locker rooms, which have showers, there is no nudity. No one likes to change in front of others. And if someone is uncomfortable, they can move away, or, oh my gosh, turn away. I've taught my I've taught my kids not to stare, for whatever reason. I don't know. So, please, would you please let me know why you will not reconsider, or let me know if you will reconsider, adapting a gender-inclusive policy for our district? Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next card I have is Veronica Carey, and then Arianna William. Veronica, welcome.
Hi, is this the one you want me to use?
That one works pretty good.
Okay, if it works pretty good, I'll take it. So, hi, everybody. Glad to be here. Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody in the background. My name is Veronica Carey. I grew up in Ramsey, a lifelong resident, graduated from Anoka High School 2003. I live in a beautiful house in Anoka with my family, and I'm about as 5'5" 303" as a person can get. I've got the tornado jacket. I've marched in a dozen Halloween parades. I'm part of this town. I want to be part of this town. I'm going to stay part of this town. My experiences growing up here, though, weren't always so easy. And case in point, in seventh grade, in this very building downstairs in the locker room, I was assaulted by a boy. I was knocked to the ground by him, kicked repeatedly between my legs, and then kicked several times in my abdomen until I passed out from the pain. When I woke up, I immediately told the first teacher that I could find, and he told me two things. If I report it, everyone will know, and this will just happen to you again. The other thing he told me is this is the sort of thing that just wouldn't happen if you looked and acted more like a boy. He told me that because he thought I was a boy, and he thought I was a boy because I'm transgender. In seventh grade, I was very afraid to come out, but I was starting to test the waters by changing my clothing at school, being a little bit more feminine with my clothing, and the boy who assaulted me in a locker room said he wanted to see if I was really a girl, because that day I was wearing button-fly bootcut jeans. If a transgender-affirming policy existed back then, maybe the teachers and the students would have been more understanding of what kids like I was go through. Maybe if I'd have seen the policy, I'd have had the courage to come out at a younger age, and maybe I could have avoided the crippling depression and the self-harm that I used to cope with what happens when you deal with multiple assaults, all because I had no hope that I'd ever get to be myself. When we see policies, we get that hope. You give us that hope by enacting affirming policies that show us that we're loved and that we're cared about in this district, and there's a lot of kids who don't feel that way. Five years ago, the national media spotlight made short work of your neutrality policy, which led to so many children lost before their time. Let's hope we don't have to do that again. Have the courage to do what's right for these kids. Save a life instead of contributing to the wasting or the ending of one. I urge the Board to adopt a pro-student transgender-affirming policy for access to facilities, and I would be happy to help in any way I can, because I believe that you all want to do best for these kids, and I'm here to help support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Arianna. Arianna William. Arianna? Okay. We'll go with Kale Patchen.
That was the group of students.
Okay, okay, thank you. Emma Carr. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Brennan Nyberg. That's a student, okay. Tammy Auberg.
I sadly find myself in front of you guys again, seven years, almost seven years later, but I'm hoping this time it's a positive result a lot sooner for these kids. Some of you were here back then with the neutrality policy when my son died and others, and there was the lawsuit, and I know it was hard for me to come back here and even look at some of you, because I don't feel things, you know, it took a long time just to get anything close to where we are right now. Having some of these kids come up here and pretty much out themselves in front of you is huge, and I want to say thank you, and I wish that you wouldn't have said, you know, when everybody cheered. I mean, when kids come up and speak, I think cheering is very loud. As a matter of fact, I remember a few years ago when a bunch of Christian kids came up here and were saying things, even though you guys don't supposedly say things back, you guys all said, "Oh, great, thank you," you know, and were so great about what they did, and I always wished that you guys would do that for all kids. And I'm praying to God that you guys do something and you include kids. Hopefully, you guys got my email that I sent, I believe it was Friday. I now have a transgender child, and I will not send her back to this district, but, you know, I don't think that anybody should out anybody. She's the one that, she wanted to come and talk tonight, but I'd rather her keep on with her life. But I just pray that you guys include this policy. She goes to the bathroom, she does her makeup, she joins in with other girls, they laugh, they talk about boys. She's a girl. Everybody sees a girl when they look at her. Everybody knows she's a girl. And I just pray that, you know, we don't have a string of suicides again, because these policies trickle down these groups that come here and use religion. You can hear in their voice, you can hear who truly cares for kids and who truly just wants to put things in order in their own way. This pastor that came up here, like, oh my God, he brought me to tears. This is, you know, Christ's work coming through this man, and I just pray that you guys, whoever does know Christ and follows Christ, that you guys truly know who He really was, who He helped, because it wasn't just the popular people, the rich people. It was the people that were different, the people that weren't treated correctly. Please, all I'm asking you is to please make a policy that's inclusive of everybody. These kids deserve to be who they are. They know who they are, and those that aren't sure, they know where to go. They know where to use the bathroom. They just want to use the bathroom. Take a look in the mirror, please. I would love, Bill, if you, you know where I live. I mean, if I can help in any way, please, just reach out.
Thank you, Tammy.
I'm here to talk. Thank you.
Next card I have is Suzanne Rizwi, and then next will be John Relander. Suzanne?
Hi, good evening. My name is Suzanne Rizwi. I've had three children go through the public schools here, started in kindergarten all the way through graduation from Coon Rapids High School. Of the three, they all live in Minneapolis. Two of them identify as queer, and, in fact, one is married to her partner, and all three of them are reluctant to come up to Coon Rapids. They say, "Oh, we don't feel comfortable there. We just..." They still have bad feelings from middle school, high school, and afterwards. And when the lawsuits were going on with bullying, I thought, okay, that's a positive step. And it's dismayed me that we're back in the state of having had national publicity and all of a sudden we're back at the same place. Instead of a positive step forward, it seems to be a step backwards. And I don't want the next generation of kids that graduates from Anoka Hennepin School Districts to say, "Momma, Dad, you come down to Minneapolis to visit us. We're just not comfortable out there. We just don't really think we belong out there." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John Relander, and then Danny Koltzler will be next. John, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. To start off with, I'm going to start by saying I was asked by some folks not to speak tonight. They felt that this was a concern, that even by bringing attention to this issue, that we are making it more difficult for the kids, that we're casting more of a spotlight on them, that we're making it more difficult for them to be kids. I know you've had, at your last meeting last month, some very well-paid donors have came here and made some points that, from some organizations with very benign names. The only reason I'm here tonight is to make sure that these kids can stay kids, that they have the chance to be kids, and that it isn't become a political football. It's not something they're interested in, it's not something we should be interested in. And I know you're going to be hearing a lot. I know this is going to probably become fundraising fodder for those who would be more conservatively bent, who would use it for their religious beliefs and use that as a sounding board to try to get more donations for their coffers. I urge you, as people who are, from many staff members that I've talked to, you care about the kids. We want to make sure that stays that way. So, please, take care of our kids. As a father, that's all I want you to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Danny Koltzler, and then Jessica Wilson will be next. Welcome.
My name is Danny Kelzer. I am 20 years old, and I'm a trans woman. I came out just under a year ago, May 7th, to be exact, in the basement of a church in southern Minneapolis. I already knew in high school, for two years, what I was, but I was afraid to come out. I graduated from Monticello in 2014, around the time that trans issues were being brought in the spotlight. However, not knowing anyone trans and the general discomfort people faced around, even speaking of trans people, held me back longer than I would have liked. Many points of the speakers that you had last week, the Minnesota Family Council has made, I genuinely agreed with. I felt as though I should face my biological realities, accept that I'm a man, and could never change that, that these feelings that I had were wrong, creepy, and generally ostracized me from the public. What I needed to do was suck it up and man up. I'm a man, be a man. So I did what I had to. I didn't come out in high school. I coped in many unhealthy ways, some of which I'm still paying for today. I've met trans people now who have been more than 20 years hiding than to come out to what they were. Some have been waiting 30, 40, even 50 years to come to terms with it, all because they're afraid of the public's eye on them. Everyone's stories are different, but they share some similarities: depression, self-loathing, jealousy, and then finally, self-acceptance. For how strong these are emotions that I had given myself, strength is my strongest asset. You see, I didn't believe that I was a woman or that I could be one for the longest time. That was due to mostly me and partially due to society. Now that we have the tools for the conversation about these issues, I genuinely wish no one to have to go through the personal turmoil that I put myself through in future generations. Being trans is not evil. It is not going against nature. No one here is trying to make anyone transgender. We are simply here to say that we exist and we are what we say we are. I'm a woman. There is loathing comes from the people around us not accepting us, not being able to use the bathroom of our gender, our locker room choice, and that puts us at a higher risk of having these issues. Trans people do not commit acts of violence in the bathroom, yet they are the ones that are victims of those attacks.
Danny, you're running up on your time.
The debate centers on focusing on young trans men using a bathroom, but people are more afraid of trans women using the women's bathroom. It's because they don't see me as being a woman. They see me for what is in my pants, and that really irks me in some ways. You are the highest point of this school district. You have the opportunity to trickle down a policy that teaches people all throughout the school district how to be inclusive, how to be right to their human beings around them, and if you do not allow trans to use the bathroom, restroom of their choice, you are telling people that they are different than you and I. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Jessica Wilson, and then Tasha Rose Hodges.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the time to listen to me today. My name is Jessica Wilson, and I'm a teacher at Champlin Park High School. I'm also the GSA advisor and a part of the LGBTQ+ community myself. We've heard a lot about the bathroom policy, and I agree with everything stated so far, so I'm going to focus on something slightly different. Besides a bathroom policy allowing students to use whichever restroom correlates with their gender identity, it is crucial that there is a specific policy requiring staff at Anoka Hennepin to honor students' preferred names and pronouns. As a GSA advisor, students have told me stories about feeling disrespected, left out, hurt, and judged by teachers and students. Some teachers don't use preferred names or pronouns because they don't feel that they need to, and there isn't a specific policy they're breaking, so they can't necessarily get into trouble. This needs to stop now. If we call students by nicknames, middle names, whatever they like to be called, and respect that, we need to respect the names of transgender students, and anyone disrespecting students in this way needs to be held accountable. Regardless of gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, and more, we are all human beings who deserve to be treated with dignity. Transgender students are as much a part of the Champlin Park family as cisgender students and deserve to use the bathroom that represents who they are and also call the name that represents them as well. Now is the time to take action and show every single student at Anoka Hennepin that they are valued and their rights matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tasha Rose Hodges, and then Andy Erickson. Welcome.
Thank you. I have this email that I've edited for length since we've been here, and there'll be links that are attached to this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Heidemann, Superintendent Law, and Board Members. My name is Tasha Rose Hodges, and I'm a mother of six children in Minnesota Public Schools. I have a master's in education and a number of years working on education advocacy in my district, as well as for children across the state. I'm here tonight to bring a perspective of a secularist, a feminist, and a woman who has championed for the underdog and marginalized people from a very young age, as Democrats are prone to do. The problem that exists with inclusion policies, like the one being demanded, is that they allow people of one biological sex to use the facilities, including bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers, of the opposite biological sex, and the safety, comfort, and privacy of all students is not considered. The only safety, comfort, and privacy of concern is for the trans-identified students. Sex segregated spaces are segregated by sex, not gender. Why are we striving to make sex segregated spaces, why aren't we not striving to make sex segregated spaces safer for those who do not conform to gender-based stereotypes? Why are we also not advocating for better mental health access for those with suicide ideation? Instead, it's being demanded by dogmatic groups who advocate unverified personal gnosis and ideology as fact, that the majority must cater. It's not justice or equity for anyone, including trans-identified people. The "separate but equal" phrase has been parsed out in previous testimony before this Board. This is egregiously appropriative of historic struggles of people of color. We can verify that there is no difference between a black or brown body and a white body. We can verify, however, that there is a difference between a male body and a female body, regardless of gender identity. In order to compel you into repudiation, you have been, have been, and will continue to be pressured with emotive language, misconstrued statistics, and told that understanding observable biological reality is bigotry. I urge this Board and community to seek out information from both positions. I think that you'll find that this ideology is synonymous with climate change denial on the right. I also encourage you to continue to keep all students safe while also making reasonable accommodations for any student who's not feeling comfortable in a sex segregated space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next card I have is Andy Erickson, and then Emily Zinos. Andy, welcome. Andy, welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak. I graduated from Orno High School in the Hennepin County School District in 2010, and throughout my entire high school experience, I felt different. I thought that I shouldn't have the feelings I did, so I immediately rejected and repressed them. I thought that if anyone ever found out, that people would hate me or they would think I was a freak. I was too scared to admit to myself what I already knew, and as a result of that, a deep depression took root in me. Throughout my entire high school experience, the discomfort and depression I experienced progressively got worse, leading me to become quiet and withdrawn, a complete turnaround compared to the happy-go-lucky kid I used to be. At times, this depression caused me to want to give up on living. All of this changed when I decided to live as the real me. I want to acknowledge that the topic of restaurants for transgender and gender nonconforming people can make some feel uncomfortable, but that discomfort, in my eyes and from my perspective, cannot compare to the significant and serious harm that depression will cause if these students are denied their basic human rights. I don't want to see anyone else have to go through the self-hatred and self-loathing that I endured in my youth. Please, do the right thing and protect this vulnerable group of young students. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. The next card I have is Emily Zinos. Welcome.
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Emily Zinos, and I'm a mother of six children who attend Minnesota public schools. I'm also a member of a national coalition of women called Hands Across the Aisle, which unites conservative Christians, lesbians, and feminists in our support for women's rights based on biological sex. I'd like to thank you all for doing exactly what a school should do, protecting the privacy, safety, and dignity of every single student in the school, no exceptions. Though you may be hearing from a few activists that ensuring student privacy is bigoted and hateful, I want you to know that far, far more people in this district, in this state, and across the country support your common sense stance. As a member of Hands Across the Aisle, I interact with hundreds of women every day who come from across the political spectrum. We are women who disagree on a lot of different political issues, but we do agree that it's a scientific fact that women and girls are physiologically different from men and boys. Recognition of that scientific fact is critical to both protecting privacy and promoting the dignity of women and girls in society. Policies that redefine sex as gender identity ignore the biological differences between the sexes and pretend as if there will be no disparate impact on girls. But when gender identity wins, girls lose. Girls lose sports scholarship opportunities because biological boys are just faster and stronger than girls. Girls lose female-only academic scholarship opportunities because no one will be allowed to turn biological boys away. And girls will lose private spaces where they can change their clothes or shower in public facilities because it will be discriminatory to refuse biological boys' access. Maintaining policies based on biological sex protects all students.
Emily, you're coming up on your time.
Okay. I just wanted to leave you with that privacy is not a partisan issue. In Hands Across the Aisle, I work with women who are Democrats and Republicans, lesbians and feminists, and everything in between. We applaud school policies that strike a balance between individual student needs and the privacy concerns of all. Thank you, board members, for protecting the students of this district and for encouraging the girls that attend Anoka Hennepin Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, the last card that I have this evening is Kirsten Schuit? Welcome.
First of all, I want to thank you, the board, and all the folks here that shared their powerful stories. It's extraordinary importance. My name is Kirsten Schuit, and I may look familiar to some of you. Back in 2011, I was one of the student plaintiffs that brought the lawsuit against the school district. And I truly had no intention of speaking tonight. However, I sat in the back of the same school where I met my wife 10 years ago, and I found myself unable to sit silently. So, as someone that went to the school in this district, struggled, and has now been able to move on with my life outside of this district, I still continue to struggle with the effects of what happened to me here, clearly. But as one of the lucky ones that made it here, I'm sitting here yet again imploring you to please do the right thing now. You have the opportunity to do what's right and protect all students here in this district. This isn't just an opportunity to do the right thing. This is a decision that you're making between life and death for some of these students. So, thank you very much.
Kirsten, thank you very much for coming forward. So, that ends our delegations and petitions for this evening. Thank everybody for the courtesy that you provided in the testimony. So, we'll move on next to the next item of our agenda. No, we'll keep...